Good evening. Welcome to our June 7, 2022 city council meeting. Time is 7:06 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mason, Mason Okumbo from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church of West Covina. Mayor Protem Diaz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise please.
Mayor, thank you for this privilege. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guardian and keeper of your people, watch over the members of our city council and protect them, grant them wisdom, and permit them to experience the joys of noble service to grateful people. Encourage cooperation with those who are served and those who serve. Promote all things for the good of the people of West Covina, and may your will be accomplished among us. Amen.
Amen.
To write the title of your heart, ready to give? With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Thank you Pastor.
Roll call please.
Good evening Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Castellanos?
Here. Thank you. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to the presentations part of our agenda. First presentation we're going to have is for the West Covina Dance Team. So I'd like to invite Nancy Galvez to the front and Officer Benitez as well. Come to the mic please.
Great. Looks like good. This front.
Fantastic.
Thank you. And the West Covina Dance Team qualified for the national stage and they are the champions. Congratulations. These girls persisted, practiced, sacrificed, cheered each other on, and waited patiently for their turn. After two years of waiting for their moment, they danced their hearts out and brought the title of USA Nationals Dance Champions back to West Covina. Thank you. Lot to cheer and celebrate. I'd like to allow you to read the list of accomplishments or name them off as well as the names of the dancers and the dance competitions you've attended.
Wonderful. Can I use your?
Absolutely.
Cheat sheet, okay. List of accomplishments. So we are the USA Nationals Dance Champions in JV Hip-Hop. We placed first. Third place in Small Dance Drill at USA Dance Nationals. For the USA Regional Dance Competition, we placed first in JV Hip-Hop. Second place in JV Palm. Second place in Small Dance Drill. And with no further ado, the wonderful people we are celebrating tonight. So Aura Rivera, she performed in JV Hip-Hop. And Angelina Lofti, she is not here tonight, but she performed in JV Hip-Hop, Small Dance Drill, and Palm. Esme Cordova, she is the team captain and she could not be here today. She performed in JV Hip-Hop, Small Dance Drill, and Palm. Evelyn Rodriguez, she performed in JV Hip-Hop, Small Dance Drill, and Palm. Gracie Torres, she performed in Small Dance Drill and Palm. Melanie Selaya, she performed in JV Hip-Hop, Small Dance Drill and Palm. Michelle Hu, Small Dance Drill and Palm. Macaulay Vias, JV Hip-Hop and Palm. Samantha Ramirez, Palm. And Sarah Melendez, JV Hip-Hop, Small Dance Drill and Palm. Pardon? Yes, yes, awesome, thank you, I appreciate it. Your cheat sheet.
Thank you for that. And actually before, go ahead.
Can I steal this one?
Yes.
Ready Esme?
Oh yes.
Esme Dance Captain. Congratulations.
No, wrong one. Here you go. Right?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And actually, I'd like to invite one of the sponsors who I know sponsors this team often, our Councilman Tony Wu. Would you like to come up please? And if we could, well, let me have Councilman Wu say a few words first.
Thank you so much Mayor, and I'm so proud with all these young lady. I basically saw you grow up, okay? And the first time, okay, and we saw with you guys, and we request and say, hey, I'm going to sponsor you, but you need to perform. And you guys, a guy performed at the lake, remember? A guy have outstanding. The first day, we have about 200 people. The second day, we have about 300, but the last day, we have about packs, about 500, 600 people show up just to see your outstanding performance. And I cannot believe it, now you are graduate, okay, moving to the life college, all the good thing. So I want to thank you guys, continue to carry on, okay, and fight and be outstanding of our West Covina representatives. And with this, I want to wish you the best for the future. Chase the dream. Never give up. You will be somebody. But thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. And if you young ladies wouldn't mind if we could get half and half here for a photo? Perfect, five and five.
Also want to come to have a picture with them?
Yeah, come on up.
Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. Well. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. Well. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. Well. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. Well. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen? Yeah. All right. Karen, Karen, want to show us Karen?
1,000 miles from Vassilia over to the Mexican border. San Diego Gas and Electric isn't part of SoCal Gas, but it is part of the Sempra family. We operate over 103 miles of pipeline. So this is particularly important as we're investing in alternative fuels. Sustainability has and will continue to be of top priority at SoCal Gas. Our commitment and our mission is to build the cleanest, safest, most reliable energy company in America. And let me tell you a little bit about how we're doing that. We are enabling the energy transition, and we are doing that by investing in alternative fuels. You may ask, why do you have a cow up there? Well, renewable natural gas. Cows go to the bathroom. That bathroom produces a lot of methane. We are currently capturing that methane in our dairy farms, conditioning it, and putting it right back into our pipeline. Not only are we investing in RNG, but in hydrogen. So we have huge investments in hydrogen. We have been blending it at our situation city up to 20%. We are also driving resilient operations. We cannot deliver, continue to deliver this clean energy without having strong operations. So recently, one of our newest programs that we have is our aviation mapping. We are using helicopters and drones to be able to fly over our communities, to be able to see if we have any leakage. Just two weeks ago, we were flying a helicopter here over West Covina. And about two weeks, we'll be flying another helicopter. So I work closely with your city manager and your public works director to get that out into the community. We're always championing our people and our communities. You know, it really means so much for us to continue to give back to the communities that we serve. Just last week, we were in Baldwin Park installing fire alarms. So I look forward to connecting with all of you to identify nonprofits in the area. And finally, achieving world-class safety. Safety is of top priority at SoCal Gas. Currently, I am meeting with your West Covina Fire Department to educate your firefighters on natural gas safety properties. And I would be remiss if I didn't remind your customers to always call 811 before you dig. It's absolutely free, no matter how small the project is. If you're just planting a tree, just remember to please pick up the phone, give us a call, especially our contractors. But we're not stopping there. So we made a big climate commitment last year. Last year in March of 2021, we made our Aspire 2045 commitment. So what does that mean? That means that we have committed to be carbon neutral by 2045. But this isn't only in our facilities or our operations, but in the energy that we're delivering to your home. So what you see when you turn on the stove or your water heater is going to be just a little bit greener. So if we go to the next slide, this talks a little bit more about it. This agreement really follows three different scopes. Currently, we're on the first scope, purchasing hydrogen Maris, Toyota fuel cell cars, converting a lot of our facilities over to strictly renewable energy. The second scope will be electric generation. As many as you know, electricity here in California, we generates, SoCal Gas helps generate that electricity. So also reducing, how we're reducing the carbon that we use to produce electricity. And finally, our third scope is what you have delivered in your home. So I have a little video. I'm delighted to be part of this journey, delighted to have all of municipalities along this journey with us. So I have this short little video on the next slide that kind of highlights our commitment in a nice little video, so.
Come carbon neutral by 2045. However, energy demand is estimated to double over the next 24 years, with the state's population growing to over 50 million residents. How do we solve this massive challenge? The solution is a combined blend of innovative technologies around new forms of renewable gases, solar, wind, fuel cells, and carbon capture. At SoCal Gas, our mission is to be the cleanest, safest, and most innovative energy company in America. And we are committed to achieving net zero carbon emissions by 2045. The reality is, some of the technologies that will get us there haven't even been invented. But there are four innovative technologies that have us well on our way. Renewable gas, where waste streams are harnessed and reused to make power, becoming emissions negative. Power to gas, where excess renewable electricity is used to create renewable gas and hydrogen, which can be stored, transported, and utilized for decades. Hydrogen fuel cells, where people can reliably power their homes, businesses, and transportation with net zero emissions. And carbon capture utilization and sequestration, where carbon can be captured and utilized in new production processes for products of the future. After all, decarbonization isn't new for us. We've already reduced distribution emission rates to 0.25%, while continuing to serve our 22 million customers without sacrificing reliability, resiliency, or affordability. When California wanted to reduce pipeline emissions 20% by 2025, SoCal Gas met the goal by 2021. In 2010, renewable gas wasn't even in use. By 2022, we will reach 5% capacity throughout our infrastructure, and 20% by 2030. On the journey to net zero, our mission is more than words. It's our ethos that guides every aspect of our business. What does clean look like? Clean is decarbonizing the gas grid. Clean is turning waste into energy. Clean is utilizing excess renewable energy. What does safe look like? Safe is the diversity of clean energy sources. Safe is industry-leading protocols. Safe is the diversity of thought and culture. What does innovation look like? Innovation is evolving into a tech-first infrastructure company. Innovation is expanding the potential of renewable energy. Innovation is leading the evolution of energy. Our commitment is to make the air we breathe and the neighborhoods we share cleaner, safer, and more innovative, because our evolution is our legacy.
Exciting times at SoCal Gas. We just had an application with the PUC to build a strictly hydrogen pipeline. So we're very excited about all the progress that we're making and all the investments in alternative fuels. We cannot do that without the partnership, so I'm just delighted to present this information and its conversations like these that will allow not only us to achieve our goals, but California as well. So finally, I'd like to just highlight some customer assistance programs that we have. We have our care program that allows income-qualified customers to be able to receive 20% on their bills. We have medical baseline that if you do have a medical condition, you can do get a reduction on your natural gas bill as well. And then our energy assistance program is also income-qualified, but we will enter a resident's home and do retrofits, windows, doors, et cetera. So we encourage all of the residents and our customers to please go on our website and take a look at all these wonderful programs that we have. Finally, I will leave you with my contact information, a picture of my family. And I, again, I'm delighted to be here as your Public Affairs Manager. I have two young children, and I'm here in the San Gabriel Valley. I spend lots of time in West Covina, including Portos. So I visit my mom. So thank you so much. I'm delighted to be your Public Affairs Manager, and I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you. Hi.
We've got a question.
Absolutely.
Hi. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Since safety was such a big part of the presentation, you know, I spoke with our West Covina Medical Advisor, Dr. Basil Vazin Chart, and he said that that gas in the home is not good for children, especially those with asthma. And the World Health Organization found children living in a home with gas cooking have a 42% increased risk of asthma. And so, and I noticed in your presentation, you talked a lot about air quality, but that is a major concern. And so I just would like your response to that.
Yeah, you know, proper ventilation, we don't have any, you know, I'm not a medical expert, but we don't have any finding that the use of, you know, natural gas in a home has any negative impacts, you know? But I would love to meet with your medical advisor and see, you know, if there's any ways that we could, you know, continue to collaborate and find, you know?
Right. I mean, it is kind of a major concern. I know 55 cities and counties in California have already done code changes to no longer have have natural gas and go all electric. And it was a concern. I guess another question I had is, according to Politico, Southern California Gas was using ratepayer money to recruit Latino and Asian council members to fight energy efficiency codes and standards for buildings, which is a concern, because, you know, this presentation seemed kind of out of the blue. And so if you could speak to that, to the fines that Southern California Gas recently paid?
Yeah, you know, that was unrelated to council members specifically. That was something with the California Energy Commission and with our ratepayer funds that way. So I can't comment very much on that. I'm not in the legal proceedings or on the, you know, that side of the House, but I would be happy to provide more information. I can leave you my business card and meet with you directly. But, you know, as it relates to air quality, we are doing everything we can. Transportation, especially in California, is of a big concern, you know? And so...
But as far as inside the home, you have no knowledge about the increased risk to children and children with asthma? That's...
Not with, no.
Okay.
We service 22 million customers.
Yes.
That has not been an issue typically.
No, it's an issue.
That live around freeways, you see the higher...
No, and the research is out there. It's an issue. Whether you want to share that it's an issue is, I mean, I'm not asking for the debate. I just wanted to hear what Southern California Gas was going to do about that.
I think you've heard about all the wonderful things that we're working on and all the wonderful things that we're trying to do. As you know, we are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. And so anything that we do needs to go through that regulatory body. So even renewable natural gas, right? You would think, we need to get that back into our homes. This is a renewable gas, right? Why are we letting some...
Well, I would argue we don't need to get gas back in.
You know what? I think...
Thank you. Yeah, no, no, I got my, yeah, I asked my question. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Linay. We appreciate it. We have your contact info.
Thank you so much.
And anything comes up, we'll reach out, and our constituents can do the same.
Thank you, and I look forward to connecting with you. I hope we can sit down and have a cup of coffee and maybe discuss some of our differences. Thank you.
Thank you, Linay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
After presentations, we're moving on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. And Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have five speaker cards, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Mike Greenspan, followed by Wayne Spender, followed by Herman.
Mike Greenspan, I hope people voted today. We can gripe all we want, but if you didn't vote by today, too bad. And when they talked about over here, the subdivision with the 39 homes on the 2.26 acres, kind of that corner lot, and they were talking about natural gas is on the way out as far as legislation. I heard something just last week, City of LA won't be allowing natural gas in future construction. So you've been, you got a heads up from those developers, just thought I'd let you know. And for Letty in your neighborhood with blackouts, all I can tell you is buy generators. That's about the only, you know, mind you, they aren't there to be there all the time, but for blackouts, in case you have people with medical problems or something, maybe you can get a volume discount. But that's all I could tell you, subdivision is get some generators. Having grown up in Florida, people know of generators because hurricanes come through, and you might get your, might be a week or two before you get your electricity back. So I know people in Florida, generators do a lot. Now, we have a mayor's race in LA, and I want to clarify something. This Caruso guy acts like, oh, I'm an outsider, have nothing to do with City Hall. Biggest fucking lie on the planet, after all. Englander, every time that crooked cop who took a bribe, not just a money bribe, but an escort masseuse bribe, i.e. for a raucous night in Las Vegas. So they could give, this is from developers, maybe not Caruso, but some of his buddies. But every time Englander ran for office, Caruso gave the maximum for both city council races, his office holder account, and even his failed attempt to be supervisor. He gave, he was given the maximum amount. And also, somebody running statewide, the controller from LA, Ron Galperin, he gave $500 to Mitchell Englander. Just thought people should know. But Caruso is trying to look like Mr. Clean. He's probably one of the dirtiest ones around, and we just don't know, because Englander managed to plead guilty to one count of seven. So we don't know the details of where he got his bribes. We don't know at all. I've heard them say Chinese developers, but the LA Times, I've heard a lot of these publications are owned by people from China. And it's funny, the politicians' names are mentioned, but never a developer's name has been mentioned, not a one. And apparently, we must be living in a news vacuum, because the casino operators in Las Vegas did not want to allow Jose Wezar, a former council member, in there, because he had an image of shaking down the developers. Isn't it nice to know we live in a news vacuum, and all this crooked stuff is happening, and other parts of the country know about it and not us? So I want to let people know about it. So don't believe all that stuff. Caruso put $40 million of his own to try to buy the mayor's job, and then he got $4 million through one of these, some call them super PACs, some call them independent expenditure committees, but the racist white Republican Pigs Union, the police. The Los Angeles Pig Department gave, has put $4 million to try to beat Karen Bass for nothing but racial reason. They don't want a spots a gal in the mayor's office. And 80% of the LAPD does not live in LA. They live in Simi Valley, Santa Claritas, probably the San Gabriel Valley. That George guy who comes here probably lives very near here, not in LA. But I just thought I'd give the perspective. So when we talk about outsiders, oh, yes, LAPD is full of outsiders that come in. I've often thought if I was given a test and had to check if they lived in the city or commuted, I wouldn't get 100 on it. I'd just check all 9300 as commutes to LA, and I'd get an 80 on the test. Not bad. You know, we have the attitude of doing what it takes to get by. Oh, and for the mayor pro tem who cut off my microphone when her husband spoke about Thomas Allison that inspired me, I voted for him for judge.
Our next speaker is Wayne Spender, followed by Herman, followed by Laura Baraza. Herman, followed by Linda Baraza, followed by Albert Ochoa.
So, everybody, it's vote night. Well, let's start the vote night like this. One out of three pages, and on the third page, I should say the fourth page, Thomas D. Allison, attorney, legal professor. Isn't that great, Ms. Diaz? I think the former speaker before me, Mr. Greenspan, was correct. Bunch of political garbage. And since I don't believe in America, it's doomed. It's doomed. That's my vote. That's my vote. Because I'm an American citizen, natural born, First Amendment believer, and an advocate in the way we treat homeless veterans and the way we treat homeless people on our streets. Now, I'm not sure whether or not most of you, or maybe the partial of you that don't care, like from Ms. Rubio's office, the senator, I haven't seen one possible hint that the crisis of homelessness is over. And so I filled out my cards, all three, LA loser, Pasadena loser, and a matter of fact, Anaheim loser in my hand. All three for you guys, for the record, along with my 20 pages, for the record, dealing with Mitchell Englander, the county of Los Angeles, and look at Kevin Delion in his stupid roundabout proposal, came in third place because he's a loser. So you folks, get out of the gutter. Matter of fact, Mr. Greenspan hinted a little bit on this regarding the United States District Court of Central District, California, October 2019 grand jury indictment, 18 USC, 1962, racketeering influence and corrupt organizations, conspiracy. Jose Luis Wezar, defendant versus the United States of America, and you in a gun, you in a uniform. Cowards couldn't stop one man for how many minutes while he gunned down 19 children, lost one and two adults. And the cowards are trained. The cowards have the weapons to destroy life. No liberty, but destroy life, Ms. Lopez. How would I know that? I used to save lives. Six years at County USC, eternal medicine, eighth floor, and I watched your dead AIDS patients die by the hundreds. That's reality. Also, retaliation and discrimination falls under reference number 0524228H00241, for the record. The guard is now informed that handlers of service animals are not required to provide documentation for their service animal. Well, no shit. No shit. You're discriminating against elderly people, disabled people, and our veterans because they have no knowledge that I am your knowledge. United States versus Bagdad Zarian. I'll read into the record politely. United States versus Bagdad Zarian. To shoot the nigg, lest this country be fucked for another four years, because never in the history has a black person done anything right. Well, Homeland Security came to my home. They questioned me about this, and nothing was done. Why? Because it's protected speech, First Amendment, constitutional protection, and I believe in it. I believe in it. Not like Tony Wu took council people to China and did some shady business, and then ordered Mr. LAPD jackass George and his friends. I don't know if it was the West Covina Police, but when you went out in the parking lot and destroyed my vehicle for $8,000 in damage, don't be so fucking stupid. That the FBI at 310-477-6565 are monitoring your bad corruption and behaviors. All my documents are for the record. I want to thank you and appreciate your understanding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Laura Baraza, followed by Albert Ochoa, followed by Shazir, Shazad Shazir.
Oh, should I remove my ballot? Let me put it into the collection box.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Laura Baraza. I'm a resident of West Covina since 1979. I'm representing today our Neighborhood Watch of Rodney Avenue and Anson Way. Members who attend our regular meetings count as 20 members, 20 neighbors. The reason why I'm here today is to address the fire danger in our neighborhood and adjoining hillsides along the west side of Souths Avenue and Aroma to Amar Road. A map's attached. The subject matter of today is the hillside irrigation maintenance and repair. The actions that we took as a group on Sunday, excuse me, the actions we have taken as a group. On Saturday, August 15, 2020, at 9:00 a.m., our Neighborhood Watch met to discuss ways to address the fire danger concerns and options we would discuss with our city representatives regarding our irrigation maintenance and repair, broken sprinklers, hillsides with dry shrubs, trees, and trash along the hillsides. In September 2020, each neighbor took on a task to contact our representatives. We contacted them by email, telephone, in person, by mail. Most responded favorably, saying they would get back to us. Others were unresponsive to our concerns. We contacted the West Covina Department of Public Service Maintenance, Division Parks and Landscape Maintenance. We reached out, excuse me, we reached out to our president of Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water Division III. We contacted the mayor of West Covina. We reached out to public superintendent of West Covina. We contacted the Director of Communications of Urban Water Systems and the Fire Department. Five families sent pictures to the City of West Covina app, www.westcovina.org/departments to bring attention to our concerns. Pictures are attached. In July 2021, one of our neighbors contacted our mayor pro tem of West Covina, who emailed her back that he would see what he could be, what could be done. Two years later, and no one has addressed our concerns. I am at a loss to understand why our representatives have obviously made no effort to contact us, expedite recommendations, or to keep us informed of the situation. Two years to date, conditions have worsened. The risk of a fire that may destroy our homes and our hillsides would be devastating. We have many, we have had many close calls, but thanks to the quick response of the Fire Department, they were able to maintain fires from burning our homes. Pictures attached. I ask that you please make a motion to send the city surveyors to investigate the conditions of the hillsides, and at the very least, make a recommendation to review the city's budget to repair the irrigation systems and start a watering scheduling according to our state regulations. If you find that our concerns aren't warranted, we would like a copy of the findings and recommendations. When would we expect a response? Respectfully, Laura Baraza, resident of West Covina. Thank you.
Albert Ochoa, followed by Shazir, Shazad Shazir.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, staff, Albert Ochoa, West Covina resident. I'm new at this, so if I have to wait, let me know. I know I want to speak in favor for traffic item number 18. Can I speak now, or do I have to wait?
You're fine. It's not a public hearing, so you could comment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So again, I'm here in favor. The committee has made recommendations, and we're looking forward to restore the help of safe motors driving again. It looked like we're on phase one. We need a permanent solution to our safety agenda issue. So again, I just want to make sure that that corner turn gets addressed, because it is dangerous. Again, on March 26, we had an accident 2022 at my residence, and less than two months, another vehicle ended up on my property again. It was a near miss. It didn't hit nothing, but that's how dangerous it is. So I just want to speak in favor. I saw all the recommendations. We had a good meeting, and I look forward to restore safe driving again. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shazad Shazir, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. I'm Shazad Shiggar, and I'm a West Covina resident. The reason I'm here today is, first of all, thank you for doing the proclamation for Gun Awareness Day, Safety Awareness Day. Really important that we acknowledge the problems that we're having in this society and doing something about it, and really would urge you guys to consider what Francois said earlier about, you know, an ordinance that would support safe storage of guns in people's homes. The other reason I'm here is because I know the city is coming into a lot of money from the feds, from the state. the feds, from the state, to talk about the infrastructure in this area and to bridge the gap, I guess, the internet gap, that people don't have internet access and to bridge that gap. So I'm wondering about whether the council and city manager has thought about, looked into fiber optics because from what I've been learning about it, it seems like a really good possibility for our city to do that kind of infrastructure and using that money to support that so that basically in the long term, we're all going to be benefiting from that, the tool that they have. So I would really, I'm wondering if that's been a consideration at all in the city council. Thank you.
Yep.
Bill Elliott, followed by JD.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. During the last council meeting, Tabatabai over here uttered my name on Facebook and in the meeting in the same breath as white supremacist and mass shooter during his two-minute speech about the Buffalo tragedy. Tabatabai said I'm an influential person and for once, he's right. For over 10 years, I've successfully been a leader on many issues in this city, but he complains about perceived sway and access to power and cast dispersions on the mayor pro temp because she's my wife. The fact is, I have no more access to power than Mr. Tabatabai's wife. She is very slippery, full of nuance and innuendo. Tabatabai, keep my name out your motherfucking mouth. Implying that I'm a white supremacist, mass shooter, and lying in wait is outrageous. You're a public figure. I am not. Careful. This seething racist knows that the four recent consecutive mass shootings, the gunman's race was black, white, Asian, and Latino, but he conveniently forgot to include that. Constant seeds of division are sown together through his, through this race hustler's conflation of terms and dog whistles. If you disagree with him, he predictably brands you a racist. Regarding Uvalde, I'm shocked by the disgraceful inaction by law enforcement and I'm reminded the coward, of the cowardly Florida deputy who waited outside while inside innocent children were being murdered. The catastrophic failure of local, state, and federal authorities in Texas was astounding to me. I'm in disbelief over the 19 sworn police officers that waited outside while inside 19 innocent children were being murdered. Not since Waco and Ruby Ridge has there been such disgraceful and inexcusable act of utter incompetence and cowardice by the police. If the police... We need to act swiftly to harden every school campus without delay, not with a security guard or an off-duty cop or even a school resource officer, but with a full-time dedicated police officer and a marked police car at every school whenever students are present like Israel does. We protect so many important people with guns, why not our children? The money is there. Are you listening, Board of Education? Time is of the essence. This unspeakable tragedy is further evidenced as to why it's important that the West Covina, that it's important that the West Covina City Council establishes a West Covina Police Commission forthwith and without delay. Don't wait for the crisis. Act now. Just as we have the need for a planning commission to provide a forward look ahead, there's also a very real need to create a police commission to provide critical oversight and performance review. Burbank's population is very similar to ours and their police commission was established over 20 years ago. If the police have nothing to hide, then they don't have anything to worry about, right? Isn't that what they tell us? Tabatabai says violent criminals should never be judged harshly for crimes committed on the worst day of their life. No long prison sentence, no life without parole, no death penalty ever. Their solution, his solution is to take away guns from law-abiding citizens who didn't hurt anyone. Please come join us on Facebook at West Covina Concealed Carry. Support Concealed Carry by law-abiding citizens. The police are not coming to save you, people. You are your family's own first responder. When only seconds count, the police are only minutes away. Are the good people of the first district listening? Lion Brian over here, only won by 286 votes. Are you people paying attention? Hello, is this thing on?
JD, followed by R. Robinson.
Jefferson DeRoux, longtime resident from West Covina. I'm not up here to tell you how to take care of the homeless problem, but make you aware that there is one and it's growing exponentially at Cameron Park. I think it's been reported numerous times, both by the senior softball league, residents, and patrons that visit the park. I had the pleasure of seeing one homeless pop up from the, what appears to be like a truck bed, which is part of the children's playground, gymnasium. That's where he was sleeping. It was about 5:30 in the morning, I was walking my dog. Another one was relieving himself behind one of the trailers and a third one was sleeping on the table of the pavilion close to the trash bin. Around that last one were rows of bottles of beer. Now, I understand that they may have the right to be at the park and if that's their right, so be it. But I know I don't have the right to drink at the park. I would get a citation if I sat over there and I opened up some beers, a bottle, and enjoyed myself. So I wonder why they're being allowed to partake? Why isn't the police rolling in there when they're there daily? And in fact, this last Friday, there was a very large trailer mobile home parked adjacent to the softball field and there were two people sleeping in there while we were out there playing softball. They were in there, I guess, getting a nap, taking a nap, but living basically from a trailer parked on the street. My understanding that may not be legal, but that's part of the homeless encampment problem that's growing at Cameron Park. I think related to that is the number of graffitis that are today, probably right this moment, can be seen along Lark Allen on numerous walls, one on one of the homes that you were owner of, Mr. Castellano, or it may still be. I also saw at the park a microwave that my neighbor had put out on Friday among those beers and bags of clothing and what have you underneath the pavilion. I'm trying to give you a picture of the problem that's developing at Cameron Park. This is a park where kids routinely go and play at that gymnasium, at that jungle gym, unaware that just minutes before their arrival, somebody was in there sleeping and whatever else they're doing. I have a picture of the bottles and whatever, if you need to see them. But more attention needs to be placed on that park. They ran them out of Walmarado, you ran them out of Sunset. LA has helped us by sending them out this way, but you can't ignore Cameron Park. It's adjacent to a high school, it's adjacent to an elementary, as well, it is a park where kids visit, mothers and fathers. Please direct your police department to pay attention to that area. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
R. Robinson.
So on Election Day, California's emergency continues. The health risks and benefits of being inoculated with the COVID messenger RNA experimental gene therapy currently existing under federal emergency use authorization continues. Jabbed-delivered nanoparticles, delivery envelopes pass through all of our body's membranes, including the blood-brain barrier, potentially spreading spike protein damage everywhere, including chronic fatigue and a host of health problems. So where's all the informed consent? It's not being given. The next Moneypox scam is on its way. Some call it monkey, but there are no monkeys except in zoos. I call it, I call it Moneypox. So the body of evidence produced by Naomi Wolf and others about why the vax is not safe and effective is growing daily against the pharmaceutical industry. Eventually, medical doctors are going to stop being willing shills of the industry. Medical doctors are trained like monkeys to write prescriptions and produce industry profits. MDs will eventually be replaced by NDs, naturopathic doctors and others that produce better health and less profit because people are beginning to wake up from mass hypnosis. Naomi Wolf reports, "There is an obvious trend among gaining steam because many pregnant women are getting the vax, which is unsafe for them because it may compromise their immune system." Moreover, a baby die-off is occurring over the past 12 months. For example, in Ontario, Canada, 86 newborns died. Scotland has experienced twice the normal neonatal deaths and Israel, a 34% increase compared to unjabbed mothers. This is wrongful death caused by industry conspiracy and, and knowledge of what, full knowledge of what they're doing for profit and with no informed consent in violation of the Nuremberg standards. We don't have health and safety agencies here. The CDC and FDA are worse than useless as public health protectors. A San Leandro doctor of chiropractic medicine was on the ballot today. His candidate statement says, quote, "The poisonous vax vaccines don't work. Stop infection or transmission. Over 1 million VAERS injuries." His website documents evidence of immediate and long-term debilitation. The public are guinea pigs. Masks are useless, a useless joke against the virus. Vaccine children is a crime. COVID is a bioweapon, just warfare against humanity. Vaccines kill you. Systemic inflammation in your God-created immune system is compromised. Build your immunity by natural methods," unquote. Accordingly, the website I referred to exists because it springs from the fact that the First Amendment of speech rights in our nation are gone. Reinforced by the recent theft of a presidential election, our constitutional republic has been replaced by a banana republic controlled by corporate fascism, BlackRock, Vanguard, and the medical industrial complex. The unfortunate result of this vaccine-induced pathology is not simply vast numbers of relatively immediate post-vaccine deaths. I can cite Hank Aaron and Marvin Hagler. But far more seriously, a long-term immune system collapse resulting in autoimmune diseases which will lead to increased health deterioration and ultimately early death of the afflicted biowarfare target, us. One of many unfortunate examples of the very beginnings of such long-term debilitations include inflammatory heart conditions in young males, pathologies which will continue and increasingly afflict the targets.
Thank you.
We patients as, as time progresses.
I have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I'd like to address a couple of things regarding the Anson Way Speaker, and I will want city staff to respond to this as well. I did respond and reach out and explain that the issues we see there are real, I agree with. This is not funding that comes from the city's general fund. This comes from the landscape maintenance districts. So I will allow city staff to expand on that. And regarding the homeless drinking concern at Cameron Park, we'll ask RPD to keep an eye on that and see what additional measures could be taken. So city manager, for your response to public comment concerns, please, and then after that, your city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members of the public. I'll do my best to respond to each of these speakers, although a number of them were here tonight just to express opinion. I don't think necessarily required follow-up on our part, but I wanted to respond as I could.
Thank you.
Regarding, in order, Mr. Greenspan's concerns about low voter turnout, I agree. We did suffer some long lines at one of our facilities today. We made them all available to the county for the, for the vote today. We had waits as long as 15 minutes at Cameron Park and the next time we stand at voting centers, we'll offer more because we want to encourage voter turnout as we can. Mr. Herman talked about a number of issues, including made reference to our homeless neighbors. It's a priority for our city with our HOPE team and with the good staff from La Cotta. I think we're making good inroad and I know we have more work to do. Ms. Barazza, Laura, you gave your number to our city clerk. I'm going to call you in the morning and follow up about those concerns and come see you. I don't know if I can get there tomorrow, it might be late afternoon, but I'll call and schedule a time to personally get out. I can see it through your eyes. I want to take seriously these things and see what we can do better. Sharzad talked about the possibility of the city pursuing additional federal money, monies, fundings that might be available for computer infrastructure. The city's use of the Recovery Act funds was discussed in these chambers a number of times and the council set those priorities as part of a budget. I want her to know and I want the council and community to know that we are continuing to follow up on all these other programs that are available beyond those direct subventions that came only to the municipality. For example, the transportation funding, we're working with the congressman's office on repeatedly. I think we've got a good chance at that. If the federal infrastructure bill affords us an opportunity to add infrastructure for computers and internet access, we'll pursue that as well. We've been writing a number of grants and we've been successful in quite a few of those, but we'll keep that on the radar. Mr. Elliott raised some questions about a community conversation regarding gun violence and appropriate police response. I want to assure him and everyone that the chief and I have been in conversation about our response and our approach to those situations as a, as a community and as a police department. I believe our chief is really doing a fine job and we're going to try and step it up. We've had strong presence on the campuses now that schools letting out. We're going to get a break for the summer, but it's, it's a serious issue and we're taking it seriously. JD spoke about the homeless and other problems at Cameron Park and I'll see to it, we follow up on those. I was in that park on Friday, but these things crop up overnight and do, and so we'll follow up on those. And then Mr. Robinson talked to us again, his opinions about COVID. I don't think I have a response on that one. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I think that covers everything. Thank you, city manager. And now for your report.
Good evening again. I do have a very brief manager's report tonight. First, I just wanted to mention, remind the community that there's a paper shredding event at Cortez Park on Saturday, June 18. Mark your calendar. Those are usually pretty popular and we want people to take advantage of it. Lots of things are happening at the sportsplex, lots of good things are on the horizon. I just wanted to mention a few of the upcoming tournaments that are going on. We've got a softball tournament, June 18th and 19th. We've got an ESPN tournament, which is for that entity to have on July 15. Employees of Home Depot have scheduled a tournament, as have the members of our own fire and other fire departments in the vicinity as a tribute on 9/11. We've got a staff person, Steve Zaragosa, who's on the job there and anxious to take other reservations. If people want to make them, they're welcome.
If people want to make them, they're welcome to do so for weekday reservations for Monday to Friday practices. It's nice to see that facility coming back to life. We've got an adult softball league that's in the works. It starts on the 22nd. The league fee is $400. It's a Sunday slow pitch. And again, people can contact Steve Zaragosa at the facility by email or by calling him. We hope to fill up the team rosters. Wanted to mention again about our summer concert series. These are on Wednesdays, and we've got a mix of different types of genres, and I hope we've got something for everybody. Live music, I think, is a great form of recreation, so I would encourage people to come out. Those are very pleasant evenings, Wednesday nights at the Civic Center. We're planning a Fourth of July Heroes Parade and Street Fair. We think this is going to be a lot of fun, and we encourage people to be a part of it. We're going to have a parade at 10:00 a.m. We've got DJ Phil coming. We've got line dancing. We've got a number of musical groups that are going to be participating. It'll be in the Old Town Center, South Glendora Avenue at Walnut Parkway. And we want people to contact John Carapio. There's no parade entry fee, no registration is required. We would like to know people are coming. The kickoff for that is 10:00 a.m. on July 4th. We've got some activities for kids coming, a way to help beat the heat, a five-work series, Cool Kids of Summer, they're calling it. Water activities, games, summer fun. We're targeting ages 6 through 12. We're reminding people to remember their sunblock and bring clothes they can get wet in and to bring a water bottle. So every Friday in July, 11:30 to 2:30, and we've got a list of all the parks. Summer youth basketball is coming, as is the Sunday Adult Rec Basketball League. And we've got a series of summer sports classes that are also available. A dugout cookout has been planned September 11th. This is our firefighter event that I mentioned. They're going to start at the sportsplex with the gates open for a pancake breakfast, with the Explorer Post being a part of it, and things will go on through the day. We want people to come and contribute to that and participate in that. Lots of questions about our app. We want people to uninstall the old Go app and download the new one, which they can use to report all kinds of issues. We find this to be a very effective tool. If people will use it, it's got a GPS locator. You can attach a picture, and you'll get a response with the disposition as to how the issue has been cleared and resolved, and we really would hope people would do it. The other system of somebody calling somebody, they have to find out if it's at the corner of Walk and Don't Walk and try and get an address and then go look at it. It's a lot more resources that could be used to try and solve the problems. We encourage people to download the new app and to report issues as they see them. I wanted to publicly thank Brian Gutierrez. He saw a problem and, as a work party, solved it. He did some lighting upgrades here at the city hall and did it quietly, but I wanted to publicly thank him for it. It was noted and much appreciated. The people that show up for work parties, I know who you are, and I appreciate you. I wanted to highlight our capital improvement projects. This is a snapshot of our own public works crew tending to a lot of sidewalks. I mentioned to council, we're paying a special attention to the permanent removal and replacement panels in Zone 1, which is the area around eminent hospital. And then at our next council meeting, we're going to have an overview of all of our capital projects. It's a lot of fun. Over the next five years, we're spending north of $90 million, and there's a lot of projects on that list, and it's nice to be able to be delivering them. We'll give you status updates about a lot of projects in the work. I think that's all I've got this evening. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, city manager? Seeing none, then we'll move on to our consent calendar. There's 14 items on our consent calendar today. Would anybody like to pull any of them? Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem would like to pull eight. Anything else?
Number 11.
Okay. Councilwoman Lopez Viado would like to pull 11, so that's eight and 11. Anything else? Seeing none, then do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items, number 1 through 14, with the exception of eight and 11?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have two ordinance titles I need to read into the record prior to roll call.
Thank you.
The first is item number two. Consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2499, Zone Change Number 21-02, adopting the Grove at Merced specific plan. Ordinance number 2944, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving Zone Change Number 21-02 and adopting the Grove at Merced specific plan, S.P. 32, at 1912 West Merced Avenue. Our second ordinance is number 13, and it is consideration of an ordinance adopting new purchasing procedures. Ordinance number 2498, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, repealing and replacing Division 1 generally and Division 2 purchasing system, and amending Division 3 contracting for public projects of Article 7 purchases and sales of Chapter 2 Administration of the West Covina Municipal Code. I have a motion by Councilwoman, by Mayor Protem Diaz, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, with the exception of item number eight and item number 11. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Takes us to item number eight, which is consideration of traffic committee recommendations from the traffic committee meetings between November 2021 and May 2022. Mayor Protem Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I pulled it is because I want to talk about how happy I am to see this. I mean, there's so many changes and so many upgrades to our city that I think are going to be fantastic, and they're going to help out our city, and it's going to be a safer place to drive around in, right? But I want to pay special attention to item 18. Item 18. I'm just happy that, like I said, we're going to have some improvements here. Even though I want to approve it, I still feel that we should add some additional items, and I understand that this may be a phase one, but I'm really happy with what we're doing, and I'm sure Mr. Ochoa and the neighborhood in that area are happy that we're doing this as well. But one of the things that I wanted to maybe have the traffic committee or traffic staff consider is possibly a sign that says, slow down, flashing somewhere just before that long stretch, because it seems to me like people that start driving east from Lark Allen, they make the curb, and it's nice and slow, but once they get to that long stretch, it's pedal to the metal. And so I want something that will warn them, there's a curb ahead, and please slow down. And if it has lighting, that would be great also. I mean, something like that. And I'm hoping that what we're going to put there, what are those, linears or what are they called?
Delineators.
Delineators.
Should have brought one, but I didn't.
I hope that works. I really do. I mean, even though I'm an advocate for getting the medians in there, but I'm hoping that that works, and I guess we'll see what the future holds. But I just want to say thank you, and that's it. I want to move to approve it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Wu?
Yeah, okay. I will second to approve all this traffic item, and I'm going to follow what your recommendation. I think this is, what is the problem is, okay, when people go through Lark Allen, or they make a left or make a right, okay, or they pass through it with green light, and they make a turn, okay, and the turn is kind of blind, but then you go straight, and the people don't know at the end quickly, it's going to have a kind of a sharp right turn. So maybe, I agree with you, at the turn, maybe, okay, and we put a sign with solo, that says, slow, sharp right turn approach. So kind of warn people, okay, you better to slow down, otherwise you cannot stop in time. So don't hit their home. I think that is, otherwise, people don't know. A lot of people out of town, they get a GPS, okay, and they basically go through it, and this is a shortcut from here to Azusa Freeway. So possible, and everybody using that land, okay, and I think they create a potential traffic issue, and I think we need to let people to slow down when they go through the, okay, and Lark Allen. How do you think? Do you think it's possible we can put this, okay, and you guys can approve, and that thing can be, do a solo one with a slow blinking light, so people can go through it at nighttime, they see it's slow? So I think that will slow down the traffic.
We kind of prepared a little exhibit of what we are approving, or you are approving, what we're proposing, and at the end, I have a sign that has the curve, and it says 500 feet. We could put a flashing beacon on that, so it'd be like 500 feet in advance. So do we want to show what our exhibit is?
Through the chair, Mayor, we're happy to make this report, and I take it that you're interested in us doing so?
Yes, I do.
And while they're putting that up, may I take a moment to introduce our director of our traffic engineering, traffic.
We know her very well.
And Ron. Which is a public.
From emails, yes.
Some of our residents know her very well. I know Mr. Ochoa has been very vigilant. Thank you for that.
Yes, and we had a great.
We did.
Community meeting, May 11th. We first studied this in January. We realized there was an issue. Our residents had been coming, but it takes a little time to do all the studies so that we're in line with CVC and the MUTCD. So January, we presented our first, if you could go to the first. This is what's existing, right there, right now. So there are some signs. So at our January meeting, if you go to the next slide, please, here is what we recommended in our January meeting. Updated chevrons at James, there is that stop sign. We would have the solar flashing stop signs and updated RPMs along the yellow center line. Now, after our public meeting, we had a great discussion. We had about 10 or 12 residents who came to the community meeting. Each voice are concerned, and we had the city engineer, we had the police, we had traffic all representative, as well as some of city staff. So we wanted to just show that we listened, and this is kind of like phase one, because these are the things we can do right now. The signage, we can get going. Now, when you're talking about the hardscape, potentially medians or other stuff, we have to do more engineering studies to, you've got drainage issues, you've got other things that we have to do. So we wanted to make sure that what we go with right now, we can get piggyback on what's being done right now. So as you see, we're, I don't have my gla, you know, I can't see that far. I have my, let me get my paper here. I can. Here we go. So we're going to have the delineators in the middle on the yellow. So these will be yellow delineators. It's kind of like, it's a three-foot-high.
Just stick.
Skinny, skinny post, but they're on, anything you put in the road, you have to have it so it bounces back. You know, you don't want to hurt anybody. So they're all on the reflex, you know, they should be hit, you know, they have status, you know, 50 times, it should bounce back, hopefully, you know? So that would be on the whole curve, all the way starting with the residence. There's like one, two, three houses that start there and goes all the way through the curve to James. So hopefully, that is standing out when lights flash on it. And then we've extended the white side stripes with diagonal, so, you know, opposite of the way you're traveling, so it doesn't look like you're doing angled parking. Then we have the white RPMs, which are the raised pavement markers. They're not the big buttons that someone's going to get hurt. It's the kind you always see, but they've been found that at night, they really reflect the headlights. So those will be outlining the entire sides on Cherrywood, all the way down to the other curve on Garvey. So this whole section is going to have the lane narrowing with the white RPMs on the outside of the lanes with the diagonal stripes, so that it doesn't impact residents from parking, but we needed the diagonal stripes so that people don't think it's an extra lane. And then we're going to update the Chevron signage on the curve to be that high-resolution, the high-vis neon yellow to make it stand out. And then, like I said, the usual, the solar stop signs at James, and then upgrade the striping that's there. And then the next sign, the next slide, now this is kind of what we can put in advance. About 500 feet in advance, there is a street light. You can kind of see at the end of the white area. This is the curved sign ahead, 500 feet. Now, we could put a beacon on that so that it shows up at night, and that is something that we can do.
Are you going to put a slow, or just a graphic?
Well, normally, we don't use the writing. We use now the pictures of everything. Because it's more, everybody understands it, instead of someone reading the sign.
Okay, so meaning the right turn is coming.
Correct.
500 feet.
So the yellow diamond means slow. If everyone drive, that should, that's the universal slow.
I hope they know.
Well, that's it. We hope, you know, so we can do our due diligence. We put the signage out there, and we hope that people will visually start to slow down with all these.
We have to give it a try.
That's it. And so then, after we do this, like we said, we can piggyback on the project that's going on right now. And you're seeing that was, we had 27 locations that are in various stages right now. We've had a few lag time on some of the signs to order and to get them, and, you know, everyone's still a little slow getting back from COVID. So you'll be seeing all of those. So this one, they said we can, if you approve it, we can get, piggyback on with those. So it'll be something that comes within the next couple of months.
Last question, okay? When you, okay, before you get into the East Covina South, okay, through Lark Allen, you see the speed limit certified.
Yeah.
So it kind of gives people kind of a wrong impression that they can zoom through more than 35. So can we change in that, this sign, or?
Unfortunately, speed limits are set by law.
Okay.
So we have to follow the CVC code. So that's part of things that we had discussed with the residents, that maybe as part of phase two, we could look at classifying that area as a safety zone. In that respect, then we can slowly lower the speed limit, and then we would have to come back to council, and they would have to approve the lower speed limit by ordinance, because right now, in 2017, you had a citywide speed limit, and that's what was adopted and approved, so we have to kind of go by that. Now, we do have, in, it's, it can be changed every five, seven, or 10 years. So it may be something that, you know, the council may want to take a relook at in 2024 or 2023, in the five-year mark, to see if maybe, hey, you know, we want to go towards Division 0 and kind of take a look at our speed limits. There's some other, more programs coming out. They're going to be changing the way CVC, the process of adopting speed surveys.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenna. Oh, we have a question from the council.
Sorry. I talked too much.
No, I actually, I just wanted to say thank you for the stop signs on Merced and Willow, which had been hit, I don't know how many times, but you guys took care of that, painted those crosswalks, and the last month, those stop signs have stayed up. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Jenna. We appreciate you. And with that, we have a first and a second. No further questions, right?
Nope.
All right. Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Diaz and a second by Councilman Wu with a recommendation to add possible signage with lights. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye. Number eight passes 5-0. Thank you. That takes us to item number 11, which is consideration of approval of the Third Amendment to the professional services agreement with TransTech for Building and Safety Services. And the council's attention is yours, councilwoman.
Do I need a representative to come up?
What would you like to do? How would you like to approach this?
I just had a few questions.
For staff or TransTech?
Well, the first question could be for staff or TransTech. Overall, I haven't got, like, many complaints with TransTech overall, but I know we received... know we received an email regarding being charged double fees. So I just wanted to ask if that was, was that resolved or on what oversight? I know we had emails going back and forth with staff. So if you can address that in regards to those fees being charged double.
Through the chair, I certainly can. This item concerns a consideration of renewal of our contract with TransTech, who does a, believe, a really excellent job for us. They've got a number of representatives at the firm here tonight if you want to ask them further questions. We process about 4,000 building permits a year. And sometimes we get questions about them and I can tell you, those always tended to promptly and resolved amicably. The one that you're asking about concerned a local resident who had gotten a building permit initially to put in a tough shed. And the one that they originally applied for, the firm applied on their behalf, was smaller than the one that they actually ended up delivering and building. And so there was an adjustment to the fees, but I did review it and the proper fees were charged.
Okay. Do staff normally review this or do they review it?
We field calls or concerns when they come in. It's an area where I get very few concerns, but I always take them seriously and we do respond as a city. Somebody has a complaint about a building inspector, they usually want to take it somewhere else. And often that, that's the city manager's office, but we tend to them, we tend to them when they arise.
My recollection of that specific issue that you're asking about from the information I received was the initial application expired. Critical fact. So upon second submission of a separate application, I think it's important to note that they're distinct. So I don't think it's accurate to say that it was double charged, they were two distinct things. That's my understanding.
I mean, overall, like I said, I don't, we don't, I haven't received complaints, you know, compared to previous, so that on, on that component, great job. The next question is, how much money have we received? I know, I don't see any data about receiving the percentage. We get, on here, it says what the city gets as a percentage, but I haven't seen anything on that. And I know you want to, yeah, to increase this, but I would like to know on the favor of our city. Do we have that information?
We've got, we've got information about total number of permits. In terms of the fee relationship, it's a percentage of the fees that is shared between the contractor and the city.
And, and I know they wanted an increase, but doesn't the fees received from permits cover the cost in general?
It certainly does. Under California law, the city is allowed to set the fees to recover costs reasonably borne in the provision of the service. In this case, we've, we've set them to the county fees and that seems to be a relationship that's working very well. I can tell you regarding fees, I almost never get a complaint about them. What developers want is expedited reviews. They want it quickly because time is money. And I don't get complaints from builders about G or fees or this or that, I just don't.
Okay, no, I mean, that, that's the only questions I have. Like otherwise, great job overall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other, oh, Councilman Wu?
Yeah, I want to follow up. Okay, Councilwoman, Lady Lopez Viado's question, okay, I think, okay, I think currently TransTech compared with Weldon, okay, okay, make major difference. Weldon has a lot of complaint for residents, okay?
Very true.
And I don't know who recommend them, okay? So, but TransTech is doing a good job. The only question I have is two things. That's why beginning, we have them to, when we remember, we review it and we talk to them, okay, we want to make sure the customer service, okay, and continue to make sure. And at the same time, profit sharing, the profit sharing with $150,000 under would be 50/50, anything about less, okay, it's a 60/40. And anything, okay, about 250,000 would be 64/35. Okay, so I, we don't have any number. We want to see, okay, what number, okay, to the city. I think our finance directors should maybe have some number for that. Okay, we want to, it's no complaint about their service, I think they're doing a good job, but about the bargain we approve is the, don't forget, the building and safety is the city's cash registers, okay, bringing the revenue into the city, okay? And we want to make sure the city get the most of revenue. And the number three, okay, have city, like from the beginning, we talked to TransTech, we want to know the in-house, the staff, staffing compared with outsourcing. And we need a comparison, okay, that what is feasible. If TransTech is continue doing a good job and the city make money and the people happy, they will continue to use them. But if a city can make more money and we can have, okay, our staffing in-house, so we maybe can do some kind of analysis and comparison. That's why we talked to the TransTech from the beginning. But again, and I think this is how, at beginning, we set up like this. So we want to make sure, okay, and we get this information so we can make a right decision. Okay, and so go ahead, city manager.
Through the chair, if I may. I think it's well that the city always consider all options in service provision and I'd be happy to take your direction tonight, return with an analysis in terms of the, the dollars of it all.
Information, yeah.
I can tell you that with this firm, we've got a really amazing commitment to customer care and, and they, they take that duty quite seriously. We've got a number of representatives from the firm here tonight if you'd like to speak with them directly this evening. But I'd be happy to provide you those other informations that you were requesting, Councilman.
We, we did a transfer last year, January, from Weldon into TransTech. So, so suppose we should have evaluation for one year deal. So last year, one year, okay, how much the city share and how much, okay, I think this is your public record, how much Weldon, not Weldon, TransTech receive and how much city share, okay? And to be fair, okay, I think, do we have that information? Do we?
I don't have it as part of this PowerPoint, but I'd be happy to provide it for you.
Stephanie, do you have the sourcing information? I'm sorry, are you here? I was looking upstairs.
Sorry, I don't have dollars in front of me, but I do know that the, the point of this one is not to increase their rates, their, their percentages are going to stay the same. What has happened is we've actually increased our revenue with each of our budget amendments and I apologize, I don't have the revenue side. But with each revenue increase, I had also increased what I thought we were going to pay TransTech. However, their contract is limited to this amount of $940,000.
Nice, true, yeah.
And we're, we've already met that, which we anticipated because our building services, our revenue has come in so high. And I apologize, I don't have that number right in front of me if I pulled a quarterly report.
When you say nine, I'm sorry, when you say $950,000, it's a net profit or is the gross? When you say the cap? This is a net or a gross of the permit fee?
So this cap is what we actually pay them. So it's not associated with the revenue at all because?
Got it. We, we now, we pay them $900,000, $950,000?
That was the cap that was put on it, never taking into consideration if our revenue is astronomically higher than that, then obviously.
So if we paid them $940,000 in return, the city should have more than a million-dollar income?
Correct, we do. We have way more than that. We have enough to where I had anticipated we'd at least be paying them about 1.4 million based on their calculations of the rates that are in that contract by the end of the fiscal year, based on the revenue that we're already receiving. So staff's not asking to change those terms.
So basically, we want to, we want to approve is they should receive due to we have more volume, so we don't cap them with $940,000 for last contract, we want to raise up because we, right now, we have a way, we have a lot of permit application development, so meaning this is going to, so in that way, they, we want, they want to get paid more.
Exactly. Well, we want to be able to keep them contracted with us to pay more because right now, since we've reached the cap, we can't, staff can't pay them for the services that they're doing and, and they couldn't continue to do them. So we definitely want them to keep, continue to bring in the revenue. And so by capping a contract like this, doesn't quite make sense. It's similar like.
Understand. But, but in the history of West Covina, always have our in-house building and safety before. Okay, I think it's three inspector plus administrator, so four staff, okay? And that would be how, how much, half a million dollars?
I don't know off the top of my head how much it was.
I remember.
For the prior staff.
I was there at that time. So I think we have a long, long then and couple of inspector will lead this on that with us for a long time. Okay, and it's, so, 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 okay, if we pay them more than a million dollars, will that be sufficient? But I don't know the service level.
No.
No?
No, because right now, and just out of the third quarter, I was predicting that we'd probably end up paying them around 1.4 or 1.5 just based on the revenue that we had been getting at the time of the third quarter. If we get more revenue, building service revenue, that means that they're going to get.
I have no complaint about their service. I'm just thinking about, in the business point of view, if we paying three or four staff, we only pay out $500,000 or, okay, but we will keep the rest of $2 million, $3 million.
So the way the contract's written, if we don't get revenue, they don't get paid.
I'm not talking about the contract. I'm talking about compare with our in-house. That, that is my question.
I would have to look back into what we paid in-house versus out-house.
Yeah, so, so, so my request is.
That was prior.
Include that in the report.
Including that in the report, how much city receive from last year and the year today, like year today, how much we receive and the plus, how much we pay them. And then if we, either, okay, with our potentially in-house, how much there will be, okay, cost city, okay, right? Okay, and then in that way, now building, okay, they're doing a good job, but I'm talking about, money's money. If city can receive more money and a good service, why not city keep most of the, our revenues since right now, we, we can hire more people based on this income we have.
Staff can definitely put that evaluation together for you.
As a full-service city, okay, and again, again, building and safety is our cash registers, people coming in, pay the, pay the permit fee, pay application fee, that's another fee generated by the city income. And city want to make sure those money keeping our, so provide service, okay, for the, for our program. So anyway, this is my request to get all the report, but not necessarily, we are, we are, we, we don't want them, we just want to see the, the number. But in the, today, we just want to raise up due to the contracts, due to we have more volume, so we need to, okay?
Yes.
Otherwise, they don't want to work more due to we only pay them this kind of amount of money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tabatabai?
Oh, yeah, just to piggyback on Councilman Wu, so I think the, the request, which I agree, is to see the viability of the city to go ahead and, and go back to doing our own building and permitting, see if we have the capacity and if it would be, you know, cost-effective for, for the city to not outsource anymore, right? And that way, we could get a real comparison and, and make a quality decision. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? No.
Since we have a TransTech over here, we want, and Jenna did, doing an excellent job of traffic engineering this on that, but at the same time, we want to see, okay, how much we pay them, okay? I think we have some numbers sometimes, okay? So we can all see all the, all this outsourcing, how much cost the city? And I, I think engineering is a little bit more difficult, is really need a very good qualified, qualified people, okay? All those engineers doing a good job, okay? It's excellent job, okay? And I saw the, the traffic hearing, okay, committee, okay, this is a, they very tend to the resident and they try to give the best for, for the city. So I have no, no problem with engineering, okay? I think they're doing such a outstanding job. I think for city try to hire outstanding engineering would be a little bit more difficult and then the building and safety, okay? Because building and safety, quite a lot of inspector floating around. So, so that is how we, we want to see the city future, can we get more revenue because we fighting for each dollar? But we will see, we will see how to, okay, and the survey and do we, can we get the quality people, that's another issue. Okay, right? So, and the, otherwise, we still stuck with the TransTech. Okay, so, so anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephanie. And so, so to clarify, so this is just to lift the cap that we've got right now, the 940. So everyone understands.
Building and safety contract.
Perfect. Thank you, Stephanie, for that. Right. Councilwoman Lopez Viado, anything else you'd like to ask or is that, does that suffice for you?
No, that's, that's good. Just quick question, they're not raising rates and fees to our residents or to the businesses, right?
No, that's not.
I know, I know. I just want to make sure. No, that, that's fine, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I can go ahead. Are you, are we going to amend?
So, so what's the cap now? Do we have a cap now? Are we going to be $10,000 paying them? Do we have a cap? We're going to 1.4 cap? So we have to cap all the time, not by the percentage of volume?
This removes the cap? Oh, completely.
So just remove the cap, so in that way, and then we will, we will continue order about how much they pay us. So we have a clear, I have a, okay, sorry, I have another question. Okay, when they pay, Stephanie, are they paid direct to the city and we give them their share or they give us our share? So how we pay, okay, they should pay to the, our finance, that they come in to pay us and then we give them their share, right?
No, we take in the permits directly and then we tell them what our revenue was and they bill us accordingly.
So, so basically.
You get the money first.
And so we know exactly.
So we in control.
What the revenue is.
So we in control.
And we know what the revenue is.
Got it. So, so all the people apply, builder apply, developer, application money will go to city first?
Yes.
And then we, we based on the city, based on that amount, we give them the percentage based on our contract?
So yes, we give them the revenue and then they bill us and we can check back, just make sure.
That's good. I want to make sure we got the money first.
That's good. Well, that's reassuring. In that case, I will go ahead and move the motion to approve, approve this item.
Remove the cap, right?
Remove the cap.
Oh, they maybe making tens of million dollars with our building going on right now.
Means you guys are going to work harder, right? Thank you. No, go, that's it.
We got a first.
And a second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz. Thank you. Mayor Castellanos?
Aye. It passes 5-0. Thank you for coming and we'll talk to you soon.
You want guy want say something or, okay, since you guys are showing up? Maybe introduce all your team.
Good idea. Hello.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. We just want to say we love this community, we're so happy to be here.
And you love the money too.
It's truly been a pleasure to work with city staff, the residents, get to know them on the traffic end, engineering end, out in the field. I know our building team works very hard and we're very proud to represent the city and we really appreciate the opportunity.
You want to introduce your team since they're here?
Yes, so I'll start with myself. My name is Melissa Demirci. I work in the contracting with the engineering and building department. We have Dennis Tarango and Isla Jefferson, our directors of building and safety and engineering plan check. Okon Demirci, one of our CIP managers slash city engineering, as well as Ahmad Ansari, who also supports the engineering. Jana Robbins in our traffic engineering, as well as Frank Lopez in the city engineering team. So we just, we love this community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we removed the cap. You should be very happy. Get more application.
All right, so that ends, that concludes our consent calendar. Moving on to departmental regular matters, we've got item number 12, which is consideration of the City of West Covina Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023 Annual Operating Capital Improvement Program Budget. Mr. City Manager, who will present this report?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, again, welcome back, Stephanie.
Good evening, thank you. So this is just going to be a recap of kind of what we've discussed over the past few months. So for the fiscal year 2223 proposed budget, revenue for all funds combined is projected to be over 126 million, with the largest of this being property tax, then followed by sales tax and then revenue from other funds, other agencies. Total expenditures excluding transfers for all budgeted funds are estimated to be over 128 million. The city's largest fund is the general fund, which accounts for 50% of the city's budget. The proposed general fund budget has also been structurally balanced with a net change in fund balance estimated to be over 500,000 after transfers. Overall, prior year actuals were used to develop realistic budget estimates. The fund balance at fiscal year end is projected to be 24 million or 31% of expenditures and transfers. The proposed CIP includes over 94 million in projects over the next five years. Currently, the city has 46 million underway across 65 projects from current and prior years. 17 million is proposed next fiscal year across 38 projects. The proposed budget includes funding to bring recreation community service programs back to pre-pandemic levels. It also includes funding for special events such as Spring Festival and Fourth of July. We've also are proposing to bring back a quarterly newsletter to inform engaged residents. We've also increased maintenance operations, which includes increasing the tree trim cycle from seven down to five years. The capital improvement plan budget also includes improvements to park and facilities, which it wasn't able to in prior years. And a budget has also been included for the health department, which is expected to be self-supported as, and operate as an enterprise fund. The proposed budget include, includes 12 new maintenance workers, all funded from special revenue such as gas tax and sewer fund, one non-s sworn public safety position and two part-time positions in, in human resources and planning. And we've also proposed to remove one part-time position in finance and upgrade one part-time position in IT to full-time. During the last council meeting, council directed staff to evaluate hiring full-time over part-time code enforcement officers. After examining operations, staff recommends hiring for full-time code enforcement officers by utilizing eight part-time positions to keep overall expenditures the same. So this would bring the total count of code enforcement officers to 10 with six part-time and four full-time positions. The budget survey was made available online through March, or from March through April with a total of 103 people responding, 85% of which were residents. Respondents were asked their opinion across 10 different service categories that the city provides. Respondents ranked infrastructure the most important, followed by police and then fire. Additionally, when asked to assign dollars to different departments, they assign their dollars first to police, then fire and then infrastructure. In comparison with the city's proposed budget, expenditures citywide have similarly been allocated first to police, then to public services, which mainly operates to maintain our city's infrastructure, followed by fire. Community workshops were held April 20th and May 4th. Overall, 12 residents participated. Staff addressed questions across the board, as you can see on the screen, which included health department, sportsplex and the proposed news, proposed new positions. As a result of all the meetings and the last update from council, the only change that has made to the proposed budget is the proposal to switch the full-time slash part-time count for the code enforcement officers. Since then, no dollars have been changed to the proposed budget. So with that, I would take any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie, I do have one question. I know our fire chief has been wearing a lot of hats and with potentially dry season coming this summer and with a lot going on in our fire department, is there any opportunity in our budget to give more assistance in the fire administration? Would that be a question for you or a city manager?
I'd be happy to take a run at that, if I may, mayor. I'd like to give a, a broader context.
Okay.
This budget that we're asking you to approve tonight is structurally balanced, but I think our professional recommendation is that we not increase expenditures at a faster rate. We think that costs, that expenditures are increasing to the horizon at a rate that is maybe not troubling, but at least concerning to us. So we want to position the city for long-term success. Now to the departmental requests. Every year, it happens every single year, the departments come in with what we call supplemental requests. It's not quite like writing a letter to Santa Claus because it's justified. The supplemental requests in the fire department are entirely reasonable and justified based on the workload. One of the things we love about Chief Capelli is he is a strong advocate for his department. Under his watch, a lot of really amazing things are getting done. He's brought council issues of personal protective equipment and rolling stock, you know, pumper engines and a new ladder truck and heaven knows the poor condition of our fire stations. All of those things have been addressed, but we're trying to hold the line on additional staffing and keep things where they are. Not that we couldn't afford it this year, but we're worried long-term to the horizon. Does he need additional administrative support in the fire administration? Absolutely. And he proposed several different positions that might get him there, different ranks, and you get different skill levels. Could we add another assistant fire chief? It's probably the most expensive way to get administrative work done. Could we add a 40-hour administrative captain, et cetera, down, down through the, the fire series? It was a hard one to say no to, but I'm not prepared to recommend it tonight, which is not to say it's not justified because it is. I've also got supplemental requests and needs in other departments that I think are worthy. We're standing up, you have my managers' report tonight about all these additional things we're starting to do in the Parks and Rec series. Could we use another staff member or two there? Absolutely. I would suggest you adopt this budget tonight. If you want me to look at these supplemental requests further, if you want to review them at a subsequent meeting in the fire series or in the public services rec series, I'll bring those back and let you talk about it further. I'm happy to do that. I just wasn't prepared to give every department everything they were asking for. You, you asked me what time it was and I told you how to build a watch and I went on too long? But I'm just, I'm urging caution.
But thank, thank you for that response, Mr. City Manager, I appreciate it. Councilman Tabataba, your hand is up, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So speaking on that, and, and I, I share your concern. And so then, one of the things in the budget is the amount of, of money that we are subsidizing the sportsplex. Not only with, with, with the money, which I believe was over $300,000 this year, plus all, all the money spent to bring it up to standard, but also with, with staff. So could, could we consider, the city consider issuing an RFP to get an outside vendor to operate and, and manage the sportsplex? Again, considering the, the fact that we, we do have, I think the next couple of years where we, we are going to be subsidizing from the general fund and, and that money could be used for, for, for other staffing without any, any clear view that that facility would pay for itself? Is, is, is that something that we could consider?
Through the chair, if I may. I'd like to ask the director to go through the, the, the numbers here regarding the, the sportsplex fund because we're segregating that and showing what those expenditures are. So I'd like to talk about that first and then return to your question of whether we could look at other options. So Stephanie, if you would.
In terms of the amount of funding that the general fund is subsidizing, we're looking at this year, it's going to be a little over 100,000 and then, or actually, last year it was over a little 100,000. This year, it'll be the full amount that we've spent, which take into account that operations have not been fully open. The sports, the fields have been closed and we've been investing money into the sportsplex to get it up to par. And so this year is a harder hit, around 344,000. Then next year, we are anticipating that more of the operations would be up and running and so we would start to see it being able to somewhat self-support itself, but the city would still be supplementing it by 180,000. I don't know if the assistant city manager, Roxanne, would like to add anything to that from an operational standpoint.
Mayor Castellanos, if I may.
Yes.
Just to piggyback off of what our finance director had shared, at the end of the day, it's really up to the council. The council's going to set the policy and it's up to the council, the direction that they, they see the sportsplex going. As indicated at our last city council meeting, one of the things that I had expressed that the staff has a responsibility to you is to make sure that we continue this conversation, making sure that we continue to provide information and feedback so that at the end of the day, the council has what they need in order to make the best decisions regarding the budget, regarding policy, and then again, staff's responsibility to carry it out.
Thank you, Roxanne. And regarding that topic, although we see it on screen in an accounting format as it is shown right now, I think your point's well taken. My fear and concern is that when we had the property managed by an outside vendor, we were enduring these losses, we, we just didn't know it. We just weren't accounting for it. We were getting ripped off dirty and it boils my blood to even think about it. They still owe us money to this day. They owe us money for deferred maintenance, roofs, broken stucco, plywood that was not maintained and painted, the, the list goes on. So although, yeah, seeing, seeing an actualized or forecasted expenditure is, is concerning, given everything we're talking about, the budget and departments that need it, but I, I think the way it was structured originally was questionable, heinous, shady, unbelievable. It was just going unnoticed and it was being, the, the benefit for all those years was not to the residents of West Covina. Maybe a small percentage, but it was to private families and outside ballplayers. So that's my concern with issuing an RFP is the, the big question of oversight, really. That's, that's my concern. Councilman Wu and then back to.
Yeah. Tabataba. I want to piggyback to the mayor regarding the issue. I think we went through this issue a year and a half ago and we talked about, should we go RFP or should we fix the place? We took over the place because the place was horrible. They haven't done anything, that anything dropped, they never pick it up and they're just a bad tenant, okay? They didn't do anything, didn't fix anything and they practiced unsafely. They have no sprinkler, they have no monitor and nothing. They didn't do nothing at all, okay? And they make top dollar. And we, and we, a city have to pay for a lot of stuff. I don't think we even make any money at all, okay? And, and this is, we developed an agency project, supposedly Number 16 Park for the city. So I think the city have no choice rather than just give away to special interest, okay? And we have to run it ourselves and when I fix up, we spend money and now look like it's starting, okay, broken, okay? And, and the resident can book anytime they feel like it, but before, they have no chance at all. Okay, then we, the people don't even know we own this ballpark. A lot of people doesn't even know we own sportsplex. They think about they own by the big league dream, but it's not true. It's our Number 16 Park using the taxpayers' money. So, so I think we went through this regarding, do we need to? And we already vote, okay, we do not want to go to RFP. We should the city own and anytime city can make the revenue and monitor the situation and make sure this place will run nice and our resident have a chance to utilize this place. So, so I want to move the motion to approve this budget like this. Okay, this is my motion to approve the budget.
You and before, and comment?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I had other questions on, on, on the budget, but I, I would like to comment. You know, access for, for community members to, to the sportsplex, you know, we just had West Covina American that, that could not afford, afford the fees to access the sportsplex for, for their All-Star teams. Currently, you know, most of those, those tournaments are not, are not being played by West Covina residents or West Covina teams, you know, which I understand because in order to generate the amount of revenue for the sportsplex, it, it is going to be generated by these, you know, I think NCS and US, USSA baseball and the senior softball league. I mean, these, these are not, you know, resident teams that, that are using the facility. These, these are outside teams and, you know, I, I understand that. I understand we had a bad tenant and we had a bad agreement, but that, that doesn't mean then that there aren't other, other vendors that could come in and be a good partner with the city. And this, you know, this, the city hadn't run a, a sportsplex before. It hadn't had a, a big league dreams before. Well, now we've had it, we've experienced, you know, what failings we as a city did in terms of oversight. But I, I'm also just, just looking at the, the spending and I, I'm just seeing that it, it's going to be this, this money pit that isn't ever going to generate the amount of revenue and, and the residents aren't going to have access. So again, I, I think to, to issue an RFP, to get outside operators, the restaurant is, is still not open, is unavailable. I, I, I believe just allowing us to see what, what that could be. And then, you know, because those 11 staff members, you know, they're, they also have a part to play at other spaces in the city, right? And so when we, when we pull them off of, you know, whether it's sewer maintenance or street repair or graffiti, you know, to work at the sportsplex, so, so there's a, a trade-off.
There's, there's trade-off.
And so, so I think, you know, I, I would, I would like us to explore that option again now that we've had, you know, a year, almost two years of operating the facility, seeing what's out there in terms of, you know, what are the activities, what are the tournaments, what are the, what are the costs? You know, now since we've operated it, we, we also understand how to oversight better. So again, that, that is what I'd like to add. I'd, I'd like to add an amendment to the budget that the, the city issue an RFP for an outside vendor to operate and change the sportsplex. That, that's one amendment I wanted to add. I'd like to add a, a second amendment, but I guess if we could have that, that first one.
Well, for that, I mean, from my seat, we could see what the rest of the council says. I'm not quite ready to consider that. I, I think some form of maybe hybrid type of arrangement in the future where vendors do either lease it or something, where the city still retains control, maybe something like that, where we don't get ourselves in the same conundrum as the original one. Might be a good one, but I agree with a lot of your points. I just still feel the burn from the past poor agreement, including the fact that, that original agreement, they gave them eight full quarters of no, no contribution at the beginning. I think that compounded the problems. But, you know, I think we still have some work to do to get it up to speed and then, then I think we should think about it carefully, how we want to offer it up to, you know, whoever might apply for an RFP. I did have a lot of people make offers to me privately. Oh, I'll rent it for X amount, you know, which it was peanuts. And then they go on Facebook and say, I offered this amount, which is like 20 times more than they ever mentioned. So I think there's some dishonesty going on out there about what had been offered. But nonetheless, I think for, for me, I would like to consider some sort of hybrid, but carefully. Any other comments on it?
No, in regards to that, so in City of LA, everybody knows Greek theater. It was operated 100% with another vendor. City of LA took, or Rec and Rec Department took over it. It did cost us tons of money, as you know, to just bring it up to par. Similar situation, took about, I don't know, three years and then now we're creating, we're revenueing a lot of money in regards to that and they have no plans on contracting that. Similar to this situation, sportsplex is not up to par. I know that there's still things that needs to be done. Like I was disappointed that the batting cage are not all working yet. Oh, they are? Oh, okay, great, because prior it wasn't working. I mean, those are extra revenues. I know here in City of La Puente, border of West Covina, they have their own batting cage there. I'd like to operate that one there so we have like our students and, and every, and our residents to actually have an alternative site. So I'm glad to hear that, that is in operation now. But the, the whole sportsplex is not fully up to par, to see the full potential. But I do agree, possibly a hybrid, maybe to kind of go with that, but I don't want to lose that full over, yeah, so that's pretty much it.
Councilman Wu? Councilman Wu?
I, I do not want any amended budget on this, I would move my motion to approve the budget like this, so I just need a second, okay? And then, and we can.
So there's no second to that amendment to Councilman Wu's, and Councilman Tabatabai, any, anything else?
Yeah, so.
Something else you said you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, so, my, my other concern is, is on the, the health department in this budget, saying that the health department will, will basically pay for itself. There, there is not a, a health department in the state of California that currently city-run health department that, that does not dip into the general fund. Again, just even looking at the City of Pasadena, you know, they, they never get enough funding in order to operate their, their health department, they have to make tough decisions in terms of whether it's cutting police, cutting public works, making cuts other places in the general fund. I think, you know, we, we've done a lot of work in terms of looking at the health department, we've spent more money than was originally planned, and I'd like to amend the, the budget to, to, to stop with our pursuit of a West Covina health department and, and to remove that from our budget.
Okay, thank you for that motion, do I have a second to that? Okay, I, I think point well taken, I, I think we're pioneers in this regard, obviously, in the state. It's a half a million dollars we're allocating to this, certainly, well, like I said, pioneers and some risk associated. Given what occurred the last two years, from my seat, I'm prepared to let, let the process continue and see if we could re, rethink the way public health is administered. So I, I share and understand your concerns and thank you for making that motion, but I don't think there's a second to that. Thank you, Councilman Tabatabai. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a first and.
And I'll second it.
We have a second, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Item is approved for one.
Thank you. That takes us to the end of our, our agenda, so at the end here, do I have any other reports, requests or comments from any councilmembers? Go, go ahead, Councilman Lopez Viado?
Just a comment to our police, I know after the Evalde shooting, many of the parents of the students here were concerned, I know our police chief, you know, put our officers out there and, you know, responded to make sure to put the community at ease. I understand that it did go into the overtime budget, but it was that assurance for the residents. After that incident, I know there were other incidents that occurred in our city at, at different schools in our, in our city, but our police did a great job in taking care of those situation and handling all threats as a serious threat, so I know parents appreciated that, so I just wanted to say thank you. And, yeah, in our biggest lawsuit, that shooting affected us here as well.
Thank you for those comments, and do I have any, any other? Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, mayor. Again, I'd also like to thank Chief Bell for his response after the, the shooting in Texas, you know, I know we both have children at the school, my eight-year-old, and, you know, the, for, for the chief to make sure all our schools were safe that day and, and the few days after was very comforting to the families. And I know that today, you know, there was talk about things we can do as a city and, and hopefully we can have those conversations, and, and I know chief, you know, as school's gonna start again in August, you'll have something for us just to make sure all our families know that West Covina PD will ensure the safety of, of our children when they're at school, so, again, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and I'll echo that, thank you chief, thank you for your leadership and looking out for our residents amid tragedy that occurred, and we always have to stay vigilant. Any other questions or comments? With that, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.